Okay, 13B, the city council, see you wish to dis here by opposed the pursuit exploration or entering into a 270, 287G task force model agreement with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement or any other agreement or arrangement that gives the federal immigration powers to Worcester officials, Counselor King and Haji.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Counselor Haji signing on to this. Hopefully others will as well. I want to begin, Mr. Chairman, by stating the facts. There is a written executive order from the city manager in regards to our engagement with ICE and Worcester Police Department's engagement with ICE, et cetera. I want to acknowledge that this body, the mayor, myself and others have voted on a policy, to produce a policy related to all of that, that that has been rendered in writing. So I want to make that clear to the public as well. This is not an assault on that whatsoever, Mr. Chairman. I also want to state that I've had the opportunity to engage with the city manager, Chief Saucier and his representatives, Deputy Chief McGinn, Deputy Chief DeAndrea, over the summer after the Latino Festival was canceled with the leadership of the Worcester Caribbean Association for their event here, including Representative KC and a representative from Boston. And we engaged a number of times over a period of meetings where we established a few things, one of which was mentioned in the press release that we let out, which was that the manager and the chief were in agreement that the next time there's such an engagement and the police are present, they will request that ICE identify themselves. That's documented. That's in writing as well. As I proceed, I want to make sure that folks know this is a preemptive shot, for lack of a better word, but it's a preemptive measure, I guess is better, that the city council of the city of Worcester does hereby opposing the pursuit, exploration or entering into a 287 task force model agreement with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement or any other agreement or arrangement that gives federal immigration powers to Worcester officials. We've heard tonight testimony that here in the city of Worcester, from our local community folks that are fighting against lawless, unconstitutional acts by the Trump administration here, federal, in the city, for folks who got their head in the sand and think that federal don't impact the city, and once again, that we have in Worcester, closing in on 60% of more children being detained by ICE, minors, many of whom should not be in that situation. Mr. Chairman, I want to take a few moments and say why it's critical for us as a city to take a clear and public stand against 287G, Mr. Chairman. This is not a time to turn a blind eye, nor is it a time to tend to bend the knee to these attacks. We know that the National Guard is being deployed by the Trump administration. We know that folks are taking more and more encroachment upon people's constitutional rights. And it's time for Worcester to stand. Mr. Chairman, the 287 program allows ICE to collaborate with state and local law enforcement to arrest and remove undocumented immigrants. I want to thank the ACLU for our ongoing communication. One of the thanks to the folks in the community that are working so hard, Lu Se, Neighbor to Neighbor, Friendly House. I'm going to miss some folks, you know, all of our state delegation that's working on this issue. While the program is often, often presented as targeting criminals, we know that in practice, that's rarely the case, or not always the case. Instead, it separates hardworking families, Mr. Chairman, people who have been contributing members of our neighborhoods and tearing apart communities. One specific version of this program, the task force model, allows local law enforcement officers, our police officers, to enforce immigration laws during their routine duties with ICE oversight. These officers are given training, resources and tools to essentially act as ICE agents. This model doesn't just overextend our local police. Again, we keep asking them to do more and more. It damages our trust, it damages trust within our communities and often leads to racial profiling. That risk is even more alarming now in light of the Supreme Court's recent decision in Vasquez v. Perdomo, which essentially legalizes racial profiling in immigration enforcement. And that, Mr. Chairman, is unacceptable. Mr. Chairman, let me be clear. Entering into a 287 task force agreement would be a step in the wrong direction for the Worcester Police Department. I want to add to that, I've had discussions with the city manager. I have no inclination that that is something in the works. To the contrary, this is again, a preemptive measure. While this isn't certainly under consideration at this time, I've introduced a resolution to make our position clear. Worcester is not going down that path. Right now, the only 287 agreement in Massachusetts is with the Department of Corrections through the jail enforcement model, which allows them to screen individuals in custody to determine their immigration status, potential to be detained and deported. However, we're seeing real pressure from federal authorities to expand this program. In fact, as of September 17th press release from the Department of Homeland Security, a number of local and state agencies partnering with ICE has skyrocketed from 135 agreements during the Biden administration to over 1,000 today. That's a 641% increase. We need to stay vigilant in the city of Worcester and firm in our stance against policies that put our residents, immigrants and communities of color at risk on sight. The ACLU has released some deeply troubling statistics about the 287G program, especially during Trump's first term, when many of these agreements were at the county level. 59% of all participating sheriffs had documented histories of anti-immigrant and xenophobic rhetoric. 55% made public statements, according to the ACLU, public statements advocating for inhumane immigration enforcement policies, often based on misinformation. 65% had records of racial profiling, other civil rights violations, including excessive use of force. And 77% operated detention facilities with severe and documented inhumane conditions. By partnering with these facilities, the federal government especially condones these conditions. Despite calls from the ACLU and others to end this harmful program, we've seen this expansion, now backed by legalized racial profiling. That should alarm all of us. Today, we have an opportunity to reaffirm our values and stand with our immigrant neighbors. By passing this resolution, we are making a clear statement. Worcester will not be complicit in a program that criminalizes families, undermines public trust and disproportionately targets communities of color. Let's be the kind of city that leads with compassion, justice and inclusion. Let's pass this resolution, stand firmly as a council in letting the manager know that we are against the 287G program. Mr. Chairman, I want to reiterate, the U.S. Supreme Court issued a decision on Monday, September 8th, reversing the judgment of lower courts that barred immigration agents from stopping individuals without reasonable suspicion and from relying solely on four factors, alone or in combination, including, and this is from that decision, one, their apparent race or ethnicity, two, you can be stopped whether you spoke Spanish or English with an accent, the type of location at which they were found, and the type of job they agreed to work, Mr. Chairman. As such agreements become more common nationally, again, we should stand in opposition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Haji.
Thank you, first of all, Counselor King, for bringing this forward. Before I share a few words with the public, Mr. Manager, may I ask you a couple of questions? Your executive order, after prompted by what happened on Eureka Street, outlined what city employees and anything that happens in city buildings, there is no collaboration, sharing information with ICE agents.
To the chair, to the counsel, you are correct. The executive order also combined was a policy for all our employees. The solicitor also put together a brochure that we trained our cabinet members and also encouraged them to train all employees. It also included the chief, they gave a directive as part of this policy and executive order to all of the department, the entire all personnel, where they were required to sign off on that directive. And also, we provided Know Your Rights training to our staff and also provided Know Your Rights training in partnership with ORI to the public. So we've been very adamant, very strong in our position in terms of not providing any resources at all costs. I'm going to give you just a even brief example in the purpose of transparency. There was a moment where there was a, we were notified that there was someone being taken by ICE here in the city. They reached out to the police department, asking for assistance for the potential of a tow truck or anything to tow the vehicles. We refused to provide that service to them and we basically told them not to reach out anymore on that issue. So again, we've taken the position, the chief has taken that position, the department is fully aware, and we, again, we have all documentation to provide that, and that we've provided our staff and our community, that we as a city took that strong position, that we will not provide any resources to these agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do want to publicly thank you and I want to publicly thank Chief Saucier for taking the opportunity to also meet, as I understand it, with leadership, people on the ground, folks who are doing the work on the ground. That shows that the open line of communication between the chief, yourself and the people who are doing this work needs to stay open. I would like to ask you, are you and the chief committed to keeping that line of communication open with organizers on the ground?
To the chair, to the counsel, yes, absolutely. We are more than welcome to have any further conversations with the community. One of the conversations just recently that came about, even with the mayor, we've been participating in conversations across the state with state leadership around this topic and the importance of continuously opening the lines of communication to community, sharing information that we're receiving at the state level to community as well. So anything that we can do to continue to stay engaged is extremely important because ultimately for us as administration, we want to make sure and ensure that our residents feel safe and that they know that there's an administration and a municipality that's going to do everything that we can to support them as our neighbors and not take part in any of these kind of activities.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do want to say a few words, and these are directly to our community and our immigrant neighbors, brothers and sisters and those who are coming from refugee communities that are experiencing a lot of trauma. It is, it is a good day because Roseanne, the mother that was torn apart from her children on Eureka Street on May 8th by ICE agents, was just granted asylum this afternoon. But the trauma, the indelible trauma that this family has experienced is not going away. Her two children are now in Brazil, her youngest child is in foster care. This mother has lingered unconstitutionally in deportation proceedings after being torn apart by federal agents wearing masks and guns on my street, on my constituents' streets. And I take that personally, that that story is very personal to me for many reasons. But I do want to remind the public that the first and last line of defense is our community. And while I appreciate the manager, I appreciate the chief of police and his people for committing to defending and not working with ICE as a bare minimum, I do want to say to the community that it is upon us, it is upon us to make sure that we are taking care of our families. Mr. Manager and Mr. Mayor, I met with an African leader in the community last week. I met with a District 5 constituent, a leader in the Kenyon community and with an asylum seeker from the LGBTQ asylum. And in all those cases, walking into a restaurant and seeing an empty restaurant and that business owner saying, "It is because of what is happening in our city that I am losing business." To watch an asylum seeker who escaped his country because of, with horrific death threats against him, be like, "I can't go outside because I am afraid." To watch a member, a coworker and someone I deeply respect who does work in the Kenyon community, say that that church has to move now from Lowell to another town because ICE agents are outside our places of worship, they're outside our schools, they're outside in the streets, they're at Gala Foods on Main Street, they're coming back on Stafford Street, they're coming back on Webster Square. No corner of this city is safe from federal agents that are snatching people off our streets. And the bare minimum, the bare minimum that this council can do, like Counselor King mentioned, is make a strong statement of support, backing the city manager and backing the police department and its chief, to say that we will absolutely do more than just not agree to cooperate with ICE. We will stand firm like Mayor Wood did in Boston and say, "Get the hell out of our city. You will not harm one more resident in our city." And lastly, I will say, a lot of people ask me, "What can I do right now? What can I do right now, Oteel? How can I help?" And I'll tell you how you can help. You can talk to Gillian Phillips and Mayde Morales. You can help the folks at the Friendly House who are seeing an increase in families not able to get food. You can help our families in our shelters that are afraid to go to work and construction workers afraid to go to workplaces because they have people hunting like vultures. This is happening in our city. And the bare minimum that each of us can do is throw a couple of dollars and donations to those people on the ground who are doing the work. That's the bare minimum we can do. There's more we can do because this fight isn't over. This fight isn't over. We have a criminal in the White House that is intent on racially profiling our Black and Brown communities, our refugees, our asylum seekers and our immigrants. And as the only immigrant-born counselor in this council, I will say to my community and every District 5 resident that I will never, ever, ever back down from having the backs of our families and our neighbors because Worcester families now and forever belong together. Thank you, Counselor King. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you to the chief of police for taking this important commitment to our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to support this resolution because I think it's important. When I first met, this lady came to my office probably several months ago, she came to this country when she was 19 years old, 19 years old, and she's in her 60s. She has a professional job here in the city of Worcester. She asked not to be identified, so I won't say where she's working. And she came, she went out of the country for a women's conference and came back and spent four days in the ICE office building, no bed, nothing. One day up in Vermont, at the, whatever they have in Vermont, the center there. Then she spent 30 or 60 days in Texas. And her words stuck with me. She goes, "I thought I wouldn't be in the United States for my life." How does this happen? She's crying in my office. And no real response for her and accept apologies and that we have you back in the city of Worcester, we'll do our best and to make sure that you get the services you need, the protection you need under the war. And it's a shame. I go to a number of meetings, a number of churches I attend, another community events where we're talking about Know Your Rights and et cetera. And I spend a lot of my Sundays there and telling people, you know, going over the Know Your Rights, what you do, Mr. Manager, and understanding what the war is and what you can do and can't do. I've been in meetings with the Attorney General's office and along with Lieutenant Governor, other mayors throughout the Commonwealth on a regular basis and just talking about what they're doing, sharing ideas and the best practices going forward. You know, we've always been a welcoming city here in Worcester and from going back over 100 years, 200 years ago. If immigrants, accepting them, they're a big part of this community, they make this community better and stronger. And that's why I filed that law probably back in January 2025, asking what the policies regarding ICE would be. And I know that you issued the executive order where you said the police don't enforce immigration law. And also, we have a policy that we did internally for the employees. And I know I met with the chief and community members and yourself, we talked about protocol going forward. And I know you had other meetings with community leaders and chief. And I know we're working on the document and I think the community is in the hands of the community, that we waiting for them to get back to us on what we would like to see in that document. I know we've worked on this since, I think, Eureka Street. So this is important to the community. I just, I was just curious, this is more curiosity because I'm going to support this, but I wanted to know, under this, I'm sorry, Counselor King, what was, this is, I didn't understand the argument was first filed, but I get it now, but what was, under Massachusetts' law, could we actually pass this resolution, this law? I just, out of curiosity. Has any Worcester, any Massachusetts city passed this?
To the chair, to the counsel, no, no, no city or municipality in the city of Massachusetts. The state law prohibits any municipal department in working with ICE.
Okay, so I understand that. But this is important, this is bigger than that, though. This is, this is sending a message to the immigrant community that we care about you, that you're part of this community. I spent eight years going into the communities, going to churches and immigrant groups, especially under the first administration back in 2000, it was at 16 through 20, but before President Biden came in and making the same cases, going in and listening and trying to comfort people. And I'll continue to, I'll continue to do that. I just want to also correct, and I think a number of people said there was nothing in writing, we do have the executive order, we do have your policy, we're working on the policy with the community. I know you're doing that, I was doing that, so hopefully that will come out soon and hopefully they get back to us soon, so we can have a protocol going forward. And I'll continue meeting with, I talked to other mayors of major cities, what they're doing, and it's pretty sad, some of the stuff they're telling, some of the plans they have, you know? And I get someone sitting there going to me, that's a conversation, "Well, if I get arrested as a mayor, I already have protocols in place." Imagine that? I'd like the official saying, "I have protocols in place if I get arrested." Imagine that? When did this ever happen? It was bad enough eight years ago, it's just getting 10 times worse today. Now, so whether we agree, disagree, I think we have to stay, as a community, stay strong and stay together as we move forward and making sure we're doing the right things. And I know some of the ideas that came out, I know a lot of people who have been detained and get out, don't want to use their names, don't want their picture shown because they're afraid, right? But I think the Lieutenant Governor and other mayors were talking about the idea, you know, we should put that story out there. The lady that came here since she was 19, detained when she was in her 60s. Now, how do you put those stories out there so the tide turns? Because in the United States of America, people are good people here in this country. Whether you're on the right or the left, you want to do the right thing and you know this is the wrong thing. And that's why we knew, that's why we need to get this message out of the people who have been detained, whether it be a youngster, two kids in, men, I forget the town, but two teenagers, teenagers here and they're being detained. It's not right. It's just not right. It's not right for anybody to be detained, really, in my mind, unless you're a real criminal, you know, and done some nasty, bad things. But if you're just a normal working person and you just came to this country for a better life and we're forcing you out of here, it's the wrong thing. It's not the message that I brought up and my beliefs as a Christian, Catholic, that we look out after one another. So anyways, Mr. Manager, I do, Mr. Chairman, I do support this measure going forward for reasons I just stated, knowing that, you know, hopefully no, no city or town passes this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go Morris Bergman, Counselor at Large, filed by Kate Toomey, Counselor at Large.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have, I will say that no matter what I say on this item, will invariably be twisted and turned by some people as me being opposed to immigrants or in favor of what ICE is doing in general. But I will say that I do, maybe it's because of my vocation as an attorney, pay attention to language. This isn't about deciding whether or not ICE is bad or good. This is about opposing the pursuit, exploration or entering into a 287 task force model agreement. The Worcester Police Department opposing them for pursuing. 287G requires the Worcester Police Department to enter a letter of intent that they intend to pursue engaging in this program. And less than until I hear a fact from the Worcester Police Department that they intend to engage in exploring or considering entering into this program, this is somewhat what Counselor King referred to it as preventive, but I look at it as hypothetical and in fact, imaginary. It's a misleading premise. The Worcester Police Department has never filed a letter of intent to enter into a 287G program. So the comments about whether or not ICE is bad or good, what they're doing or not doing, to me is not the issue because the resolution doesn't ask about our opinion about ICE. You want to make a resolution about my opinion about ICE and all of our opinions? Go ahead, I'll share it with everyone. But I don't have to justify my, and I won't justify my vote, which I intend to do on this, by my own family's history because there's no other person in this council that can say their family has suffered more, they may have suffered equally, and I'm not going to get into debating who suffered more or less, by being treated as a stranger in their own country. But I'm not here to debate whether or not my family, your family, someone else's family got treated better or worse. I'm here simply to vote on an order that's asking me to oppose something the Worcester Police Department hasn't done. And if Chief Saucier was here, maybe we could have a different discussion about this item. But when I hear colleagues of mine go off, and I'm going to say go off on the track, about ICE is bad, ICE is good, so on and so forth, I'm kind of blown away by how can we not be focusing on what the resolution asks us to? And then I'm reminded, I'm not so blown away anymore, the season we're in and what this may or may not be about. There is not one city in Massachusetts, according to what I've looked at, and it's an ACLU report, that is now involved in a 287G program. Counselor King referred to one, maybe there is one, I could have missed it. But there certainly isn't a deluge of cities and towns signing up for this. We've been talking about ICE for months and this item is on the agenda, the meeting before the last meeting before the election. So I am going to vote on what this order is asking, and it's asking for a resolution, asking the police department, opposing the police department pursuing, exploring or entering into its 287G agreement, which Counselor King, by his own words, has indicated hasn't happened yet. I'm not going to vote on a hypothetical or an imaginary premise. I'm going to vote on what facts are before me, and the fact is, there's nothing to oppose because nothing has happened yet. And if something were to happen, I'd be happy to get up again and discuss my position regarding this. And again, as I finish, I know what I've said tonight's going to get twisted and turned, that somehow I'm in favor of one thing or against another. But if Counselor King wanted my opinion on ICE, he could have put a resolution and asked about it. He's asking me to oppose something that doesn't exist and I don't oppose or support things that don't exist. That's not my job. We have plenty of things that do exist that we can spend time on, not imaginary items before an election. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the Worcester Police Department webpage, there is a section called, "Worcester Police Frequently Ask Questions on Immigration." It's available in English, Spanish, Portuguese and TUI. Question, "Can I be detained or deported by the Worcester Police Department because of my immigration status during a general police encounter such as a motor?" my immigration status during a general police encounter such as a motor vehicle stop, a call for service or request for medical aid? Answer, no. The Worcester Police Department does not have the authority to enforce federal immigration laws. You will not be arrested or detained by Worcester Police Department solely because of immigration status. Question, can I be detained or deported by the Worcester Police Department because of my immigration status if I report a crime or I'm a witness to a crime? Answer, no. The Worcester Police Department does not have the authority to enforce federal immigration laws. We are committed to equal enforcement of the law and equal service to all members of the community regardless of immigration status. Question, can a Worcester Police Officer stop or detain someone solely to check on immigration status? The answer is no. Worcester Police Officers cannot stop or detain someone to check immigration status. Question, does the Worcester Police Department enforce federal immigration laws? No. Local police, including the Worcester Police Department, do not have authority to enforce federal civil immigration laws. Local police may, however, cooperate with federal law enforcement on criminal matters unrelated to immigration status. Question, does the Worcester Police Department detain people based solely on immigration status? Answer, no. Massachusetts case law, the Commonwealth versus Lund, prevents local police from detaining people based solely on immigration status. Question, do federal immigration officers have enforcement authority in Worcester? Yes. Federal immigration officers have full authority to enforce immigration laws anywhere in the country, including Worcester. The Worcester Police Department does not have the authority to prohibit federal immigration officers from coming into our jurisdiction, nor are federal offices required to obtain Worcester Police Department approval before taking action within the community. Question, if I am arrested by a Worcester Police Officer, will they ask about my immigration status? No. The Worcester Police Department does not inquire about immigration status during the booking process. However, once fingerprinted, other law enforcement agencies could be electronically notified that you are, God bless you, in police custody and for what charges. Question, will the Worcester Police Department accompany U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, otherwise known as ICE agents, when they're acting under their authority within Worcester? The answer is possibly. The Worcester Police Department does not participate in civil immigration enforcement or detain individuals solely based on ICE detainees, detainers. However, Worcester Police Officers may be present during a federal enforcement action to main pain, public safety and protect bystanders. Question, does the Worcester School District communicate student immigration status to the Worcester Police Department? Answer, no. Additionally, officers do not ask about immigration status during encounters with students. Question, how do I find out if someone I know has been detained by ICE? Answer, there are a few ways to inquire about a specific ICE detention. Check the ICE Online Detainee Locator, they have the link. Contact the Boston ICE Enforcement and Removal Operations Field Office with the link and phone number. Submit a FOIA, Freedom of Information Request to U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement with ICE. And then four, check with your local police department. Please keep in mind, federal law enforcement agencies may check in with and request assistance from local law enforcement as it relates to federal law enforcement action taking place in a specific municipality. However, they are not legally required to. This means your local police department may or may not have knowledge of the results of any federal law enforcement activity within their jurisdiction. Again, that's on the front page of the City of Worcester Police Department website for anybody to get answers to questions that they have. And I think that those are all very good questions. One thing that was brought up, and I think is a legitimate concern, is what would the chief want and what would he say? And so because he's not here, I'd like to have the opportunity to be able to have him answer questions. So I would like to hold this under protection. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Pizzol.
So I want to begin by appreciating the work that is being done by the City Manager and his administration, my colleagues, Chief Saucier, members throughout the community and the Human Rights Commission. ICE has no place in Worcester. Our city is built on neighborhoods where we look out for each other and families that step up in times of need. All ICE does is spread fear. They keep people from going to work or a doctor's visit. They keep people from sending their kids to school. And that's not who we are. We are a community and we stick together. I reject the idea that our own government should be grabbing people off the street like some kind of dystopian novel. I am absolutely horrified by videos of kids being torn from their parents, conditions in detainment centers and even the constant stream of commercials on TV and the radio offering people tens of thousands of dollars to join ICE. Elected officials across the country have been speaking out against ICE. Mayor Wu's demanded transparency. Mayor Johnson in Chicago vowed that they will not cooperate with ICE. And I am really happy that Worcester is following suit. And let's be clear, the current administration spent nearly $100 million on a military parade. If a government can spend that kind of money on a parade, I don't think they need to take a cent of our local resources. There is no place in our city for a federal agency that is terrorizing families throughout the country. I look forward to passing this resolution tonight or our next meeting or anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Russell.
Mr. Chairman, when Counselor King passed this around, or the clerk's office, I should say, passed it around on his behalf, you know, asking if folks wanted to sign on to it, to be honest, which I had never heard of it before. I contacted the Law Department, City Solicitor, and asked just what it was. And she gave me some references and things to look at to explain what the item was, which was very helpful and I appreciate that. You know, my concern about this is, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I got up and while there was some public testimony going on tonight, I got up and I went over to the rail there next to the manager. And I said, are you listening to these folks? You're listening to this, the folks calling in? That's because they think that this is something that this city is actually considering doing. If you listen to the voices of the people that called in and some of the people that came to the microphone, those voices and those concerns were, at least to me, as someone listening, and I like to think that I've listened a lot over the last 14 years and I'm pretty good at listening. And many of them had a feeling, they were expressing that they thought this was something that the City of Worcester was actually considering or maybe even doing. And the manager said, you know, absolutely not. So I think that what I'm concerned about and what I want to make sure that the public hears from this council tonight and going forward, that this administration and this council never has and never will. They never have and they never will take part in this, what is it, 287G? And that this administration and this council will never do that. And I would make a personal appeal, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Counselor Toomey, to move this item tonight and to withdraw her, her hold on this item. And to take this, because I think the message needs to be clear in the community. If there needs to be a report or if the counselor wants a report from the chief or from the administration, ask for the report and let's get it back as soon as possible. The manager has already, already given, given everything in writing. But if you want more, ask for the report. But let's take the vote tonight. Let's get this, let's move this on. Let's, let the community know that this city government never have and never will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Wushu here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr., sorry, George, Counsel Russell, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it. I don't understand why, why we need to go back and forth with this. You know, it was said that, you know, let's, let's, let's hear back from, from the chief. You know, there was an item brought on earlier that the chief wasn't here for and that item still passed, right? So we agreed to pass it, although it was amended, we still pass it. At the end of the day, the way I see this is written, and we all see it differently, obviously, and we're entitled to that, what I, what I'm getting from this is, we, let's just not venture into exploring or entering into 287G or, you know, or pursue it. It's letting the city know, letting the chief know, the city man, everybody know that, don't even, don't even bother, right? Because we as a council do not agree. We as a council will stand together. And I'm hoping tonight we do because we're seeing this time and time again. You know, everybody's been probably, someone from your community, someone from your district has reached out to you for support regarding this. You may know someone that knows someone that's actually dealing with this as we speak right now. And it's really tough that we can't do anything to help them where they're at. But as a city, we can say, we just don't support that, we're not going to allow it in our city. I think we need to continue to try to take a stand as a council to make sure that these things like this do not happen in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Toomey.
Mr. Chair, I will accept a request for report. I'm just curious, and I will withdraw my hold, but I'm just curious where this came from. Because I don't, I don't recall anybody saying anything about entering into any agreement before. So I'm just curious where that, where that came from. So we find out where this came from.
Yeah, through the chair, through the council, I'm not aware. This is an order, a resolution by Counselor King. The first time I ever saw what this was, was when the agenda came out and I read the agenda and I saw the orders and I called the counselor and we had a conversation because I didn't even have a clue what this was either. The chief didn't have any clue what this was either, he'd never heard about it. And him and I are locked in step that we're in disagreement of this. We're not going to do that as a city. We made our position through our executive order and our policies and our directives to the department in terms of the work that we're doing. So I don't know where it came from. It came from the counselor who put it forward. But we as a city, we had no knowledge of what this is. We had no understanding. We learned about it through our solicitor who kind of explained to us. In my conversations with the current council that put it forward, and we don't support it.
Okay. So, you know, the bottom line is, it's almost like a, it just seemed to have come out of nowhere. And certainly you're saying that we would never engage. You said that the chief said that we would never engage. We've been very clear about, I just read what was on the Police Department's front page of the website, right? Very clear about the rules and regulations, right? So I just don't understand where this came from. Again, I'll withdraw my hold and ask for a report.
Okay. It's getting late. But, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Counselor Toomey for taking the hold off. I appreciate that. And the reason I'm just getting down again, because this is more than just words and we can say this doesn't mean anything because under state law, you can't, you can't do this anyways. But there's a community out there that's suffering, who are scared, they're scared and they're scared. And they're afraid to go up to the doctor's appointment, go up to, go up to any of the community hospitals in the city here and the outreach. They don't go to their appointments, the hospital appointments, their doctor's appointments. They don't go to the churches, they don't go to their jobs, they're afraid to send their kids to school because of what's going on in this country. And nobody deserves to live like that. Nobody. And these aren't criminals. I think we all agree that if you're a bad person, a really bad person, you're a criminal, I have no problem with being people taken away. But these are just people who came for a better life because America promised them a better life. And we're not the failures here. They're blaming the cities. We didn't cause this problem. The federal government caused this problem, going back 40 years. They haven't solved it and they're pinned on us, saying the cities, whether it be Boston, Chicago, Worcester, this is our problem. We didn't cause this problem. We took people in because the federal government allowed them to come in. And mostly for the right reason, whether it be refugees, whether maybe they're just seeking a better life here. We didn't cause this problem, but they've twisted this to say the cities are the problems. How well-run was this city over the last couple of decades, just accepting people? Why do people come here? Why do people come here? Because we know you're going to be accepted here. They know. They know. Not just the immigrant group, but all the other different groups. They come here because they feel safe to come to the City of Worcester. And they feel safe enough to let their kids grow here, get educated here and live the American dream. So I think it's time, you know, we balance this back and forth. We say, no, should we speak out? We attract people to come here now as we speak out. People are nervous about that. But you know, something, at the end of the day, I see Michelle Wu up there, I stood with Michelle Wu a few weeks ago and at her press conference, you know? And she stands up strong and we also just need to stand up strong because we didn't cause this problem. We didn't cause this problem. And we can fix the problem, but that's why I'm voting for this tonight because this sends a message, whether you disagree with the wording or whatever, it just sends a message to this group of people who just want to live a better life. And we offer them that better life here in the city and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Counselor King for, I guess, the final word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Counselor Toomey for withdrawing your motion. And I respect the requests that you made for your order that I will support. Mr. Chairman, the voices I hear tonight were please don't voices. As mentioned, folks are hurting. Folks aren't reporting crimes. They're not going to school. They're staying hidden. Even folks who are here legally. I stand before you as the son-in-law of a political refugee from Laos, my wife's father, who moves differently now. I talked many weeks ago about a gentleman from Worcester, from Liberia, 30 years here, permanent asylum, who was taken at gunpoint in front of his eight-year-old daughter and five-month-old child. Kept in a room for four to five days, were no one could reach him, was in Burlington, Vermont, in Plymouth. And during that time, pressured every day in like an office, wasn't put in a cell or anything, pressured and to repeatedly throughout the day, sign voluntary deportation documents, even though they have their documents. I had to reach out to Congresswoman Elizabeth Warren's office and her chief, a head of Immigration Affairs, while that wife and girlfriend or significant other was crying daily. They wouldn't accept the paperwork. They finally accepted the paperwork. That man is still locked up from this spring. I bumped into his daughter at Gates Lane and her mother two weeks ago, still waiting for a court date, still, loss of job, loss of dad, children traumatized. There's real fear there. We take an oath when we're sworn in, Mr. Chairman. We take an oath to uphold the Constitution as elected officials and elected body, whatever that means. That's meant for some folks to put their body, their actual bodies in the way of constitutional violations. We've seen people again picked up, kids here in our city, no due process, based on your look, do you have an accent, are you a person of color? All of that stuff is going on. Mr. Chairman, I received a phone call three days ago that I wasn't going to talk about, telling me that in the Boston area, there's a hotel where 200 agents, 200 ICE folks checked in for the Commonwealth of Mass. We don't know where they're going. We don't know what they're doing. We don't know where they're going, we don't know what they're doing, and I take personal umbrage in any suggestion this is a political stunt. This is the result of people, Mr. Chairman. Children, families, folks like us who are in the churches, folks like us that are in those communities, hearing. This was not something filed lightly. I look forward to a unanimous support of this item, Mr. Chairman. You know, our police department, city manager, the mayor, this council, we've been pretty good. But what folks are looking for is the resolution of this elected body to reassure them. We appreciate the school committee, and the superintendent, and all the work that they do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Bergman, your second time.
Thank you. Through, through the chair, I'd like to ask City Manager very briefly, just a couple last questions before I, I wind down and let the vote happen. Um, through the chair to the City Manager, you've indicated there's an executive order, you've explained it, I think we also supported the executive order. Is there anything that this is asking us to do, that that executive order? Is there anything for us to oppose in this that hasn't already been stated by the police chief, he's not gonna do?
Mr. Manager.
Through the chair, to the council, I think if you were looking at specificity, this calls into action a specific Task Force Model Agreement. The executive order doesn't speak specifically to that task order, but it does speak to, in general, about any, the relationship between the municipal, uh, department and ICE. It speaks to that relationship, but not specifically to...
All right. But through the chair, you said you spoke to the police chief about this, or it came up?
Yeah, yeah, we spoke to, we spoke today about this.
And if, he, you indicate he knew nothing about it?
Him and I were not aware of anything. We've never discussed it, we didn't even know what it was.
So does that indicate to you that he submitted a letter of intent to try to explore or consider doing this?
No, we've never sent any letter of intent, because again, we don't even, we didn't even know where it was. We never did, discussed it.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, as I said when I started, this was, and I gotta give credit to, to my colleague, Counsel King, this is worded in a very, very clever way, that, that there's almost no way to oppose this without somebody saying, and it will say it, I said that in the beginning, that you're a racist, so on and so forth, by, by not supporting this. But again, I'm gonna go back to my responsibility, which is to vote on the language. Now, Mr. Chairman, you indicated that the community is looking for us to support them. I agree. But this could have been done in a way that would have been 100%, on 10 of us, in agreement. That's support for the community, wording that all of us agree on. This unfortunately is worded in a way that not all of us are gonna grant. I can tell, I can't support it. I, I've just said that. It's not gonna be unanimous. So it's disappointing to me, disappointing to me, that this could not have been done in a way, words matter, in a way that we all could have been supportive to the community without us asking to vote on something that is imaginary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a vote? I guess, I just ask a quick question, maybe we can, is the word pursuit the only word that's, that, and this is that? You're objectionable to?
I'm objecting to the premise that this, there's something to oppose, when there's nothing that exists to oppose.
Okay.
So I don't know how you change that wording, but there are a number of ways this could have been worded in a way to support our immigrant community so that they, they don't feel threatened, but that didn't happen.
Okay. So we're gonna take a vote, or a roll call? Roll call.
Counsel Bergman?
No.
Counsel Caloria?
No.
Counsel Hagi?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Merrill Carlson?
Yes.
Counsel Nguyen?
Yes.
Counsel Basillo?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider, Mr. Chairman. I guess, yeah. Motion to reconsider?
Sure.
Counsel Bergman?
No.
Counsel Caloria?
No.
Counsel Hagi?